Work session, so excited to see so many faces. And thank you all so much for being here. If you did not get the opportunity to review some of those budget hearings, please make sure to go back and watch them on YouTube. It will be very helpful to have that information as you're hearing the departments talk about their individual budgets, what their needs are, what they're hoping to get, if they have enough money in the budget. That's going to be very helpful in this process as we try to figure out what we want to fund and where we can get money from. I did want to start off with a little bit of information. And this will be, I think, particularly helpful for our second termers. I think the information that, as it was presented to me over the last few budget cycles, we have had more money to move around. However, this year it is looking more like what we saw in some of those previous budget cycles. So, some of the ones that Council Lady Allen was able to work through. And I think traditionally, Council may have moved, you know, up to one to 1.5 million in some of those previous budget years. Over the last four years, what we've seen has been more between like the 20 to 30 million dollar. We've had the ability to move between 20 and 30 million. And we're not seeing that much this time around, simply because some of those places that we tend to look for funding have already been tapped to balance the budget. So with that being said, there are lots of requests, and these are all very valuable requests and things that are really, really important. But we do have to be cognizant that this is a zero sums game. So, anything that we put in this budget or any time that we're allocated additional money somewhere, that money has to come from somewhere. So that means that there are going to have to be some tough conversations as we're talking about additional things that we want to put in this budget. So, just wanted to make sure that that was kind of out there to really level set, especially again for second termers, because this looks differently than what was, has been seen in the previous term. So with that, today we will have a pay plan one-on-one presentation from Metro HR. So we're going to kick it over to Director Shannon Hall for this presentation. So thank you for joining us today.
Thank you, Chair Porterfield. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. Some of you for our second termers have seen things like this in the past, but we do have a number of first termers. So we wanted to go through just a little bit background process about how the pay plan gets developed, how all this legally works with the charter. I think it's a good refresher for all of us. But help you understand kind of the legislative process and what we go through, and then what brings us to making the recommendations that we do in the pay plan. Now this has been passed to you guys to make final approvals and those adjustments. So it can outline all of this process and then what our recommendations are for this year. So, I'm going to turn it over. I do have with me today Mike Taylor, who is our Assistant Director over Workforce Management, and Leslie Schuster, who's our head of our Classification and Compensation Team. And I'll turn it over to Leslie so she can kick it off and walk us through the presentation. We'll have plenty of time to talk through questions. I know we've gotten a number of questions specifically about how much does this cost? How much does that cost? We can share with you anything that we have today. And anything we don't, we can follow up in an email to you guys very quickly. We do realize that this is probably one of the biggest components net new to any budget, any given year. So we understand that there's a lot of focus on it.
Thank you. I'm going to talk about the legislative process that we go through with these pay plans, the timeline for when all these activities take place. And then I'll go through some of the details of what all is in these pay plans. Who's covered? How do they work? So, the legislative process is outlined in the Metro Charter. And this is in Article 12, Section 12 dot 10. And it directs the Civil Service Commission to ask the Director of HR to develop the pay plan. And this includes pay grades, pay ranges, classifications, assigning classifications to pay grades, and having created job descriptions for each classification. After Civil Service Commission approves the pay plan, then it goes to the Director of Finance and the Mayor to review for the budgetary implications. And they can make a modification uniformly to all grades, a uniform amount, up or down, to align with the budget that will be proposed. And at that point, then it goes to Council. And Council can also amend, up or down, by a uniform amount, or accept it as is, amend it by a uniform amount, or reject it. So, this goes through all those steps. HR recommends the pay plans to Civil Service. Civil Service Commission approves all the details. So they approve the pay grades assigned to each classification, the job descriptions, and what the pay schedules look like. Finance Director and Mayor can review with regard to the budget and can increase or decrease as a whole, up or down, as can the Council as you are making decisions with the budget. You receive three different pay plans by resolution from us. So, the General, Police and Fire, and Health. And each resolution will include exhibits that show the pay grades that are included in all the jobs within those pay plans. You'll also receive an ordinance with any new positions being created as part of these pay plans. This is not always necessary. You do have one this year. They happen pretty often, just if we're creating any brand-new positions to be included in the pay plans. And these are filed around the same time as the budget, and they track with that process. And again, Council has three options for these pay plan resolutions. You can approve, amend, or reject. So amend means making a uniform change, up or down as a whole, to all the grades. You can't single out a particular job or a particular group of employees to handle differently. Everything has to be changed by a uniform amount. Or you can reject, and the plans would go back to Civil Service Commission, and that whole process would start again. You also receive what are known as pay plan worksheets that are submitted to Council in accordance with Metro Code. And this is a document summarizing the changes that are being made in the pay plans with the revisions that are recommended. And it describes the implementation and proposed effective dates. And you receive that at least 15 days prior to when you would act on the pay plan resolutions. This summary is just a document for your information and doesn't require any action. It's, just provides a summary of what's happening, what changes. And I believe you received that last week, Thursday. And if it hadn't been distributed, it should be shortly. So, this is the timeline each year. So, our fiscal year begins July 1. In July, we're implementing all the changes from the previous year. And in August, we will start a new comp study. And HR will review market rates for jobs that we know we're having, recruiting or retention struggles with. We review for internal equity and just do all our market research for what we think we might need to recommend. Then, between January and March, we have our recommendations pretty well decided on, and we would prepare cost estimates for what these recommended changes would cost. And we would share these preliminary recommendations with stakeholders like Finance, Budgets, the Mayor, because at this time, they're also thinking about the budget. And this, these pay plan changes are a very large cost, usually. We also would talk to departments and unions for anything that we're going to be recommending that are relevant to them. And then, these recommendations would go to the Civil Service Commission in April. And then, now we're here in May and June. So, during this time, the Mayor would file a proposed budget. HR would present the worksheets and the resolutions to Council that show the recommended changes to the plans that are consistent with what's being proposed in the budget. And all this tracked at the same time. So, you know, any changes in one can be reflected in the other. And you will see the ordinance for new classifications. And then, all that gets approved hopefully mid-June, late-June. And, but July 1 is when all these changes will be effective, at the beginning of the fiscal year. And then, we work in HR to get everybody's information in the system updated so they get updated with new classifications and pay rates for July 1. And then we do it all again. So, I'm going to talk about details of what are these pay plans, anyway? Who's covered? How are they structured? How do employees receive increases in these plans? And how do we recommend the changes that we do? So, again, there are three pay plans that require the approval of Council. The General and Police and Fire are approved by our Civil Service Commission. Police and Fire just covers employees in the Police and Fire Departments. And the General Pay Plan would cover everyone else. The Health Pay Plan covers employees in the Health Department. And the Board of Health acts as the Civil Service Commission for the Health Department employees to approve that plan. There are about 9,500 employees that are covered under these plans. So they're paid according to these pay grades. Some are Civil Service. All Civil Service jobs would be covered under these pay plans. Some non-Civil Service jobs are covered. There are some Civil Service jobs not covered under these pay plans. It's about 1,200 employees. And these are employees whose pay is established by some other authority, like the Convention Center Authority. Metropolitan Action Commission has its own pay plan, pay structure. And some elected officials, staff, don't participate. They would have their own system of paying their employees. And some of those might be approved by a court decree, but they're not covered under part of these pay plans. The pay plans we have include two main types of pay schedules. So, there are step plans and open range plans. So the step plans look like this. So, there are pay grades that are the horizontal rows. And then, the steps are as you move over to the right. You'd move from step 1 to step 2 to step 3 within that same grade. Generally, employees are hired at base, and they move to the next steps at designated intervals. In this case, it's one year to move to steps up to step 5, and then every two years up until you reach the max. There are other pay schedules, for example, Police-Fire Corrections, where they're all annual steps. They don't have the two-year steps at the top of the range. So these step increases are what we would consider the merit increases as they move up through the range. Open range schedules would look like this with, and they show a minimum and a maximum only. And employees can be paid anywhere within that range. Employees can be hired up to the midpoint and can be paid at any rate within the range in accordance with policy and as budgets allow. And, like the steps, employees would move through the range with cost-of-living adjustments and the annual merit increases. So, there aren't fixed designated steps that employees have to be paid on. You're either 1, 2, 3. You could be paid anywhere within that range. Some of the types of jobs that are on step schedules, you'll see different charts showing step schedules for a standard range. And those are a wide variety of jobs. Office support, the technicians in engineering and planning, customer service, inventory, security guards, inspectors. Lots of different types of jobs are on that standard range. Trades has its own schedule. Those are maintenance and repair, skilled trades workers, collecturians, mechanics. Correctional officers are paid on step plans, and part police. Some of the jobs that are on open range pay plans are, there's a wide variety of those on that OR pay grade. And those, these are professional jobs, like accountants, attorneys, IT, scientists in the crime lab and water lab. These are generally professional-type jobs that you would think of as requiring a college degree. Also, most of the management positions are in these open range grades. And with the Health Pay Plan, they also use the OR pay grades. And they have their own pay schedule called the HD that they use for their doctors and dentists and the high-level bureau managers that are also open range pay grades. And then we have a few jobs that are a combination of steps and open range. The Police Plan, the Fire Plan, and Emergency Communications have jobs that are on steps and on open range. So the open range ones are going to be your highest-level managers in Police and Fire. And the ones on steps are going to be what you think of as the rank-and-file. The officers, up to captain on steps, fire department, firefighters and inspectors and all up to the commander level are on step plans. And similar with Emergency Communications, there are steps up to get to the Emergency Communications Managers. And finally, there's a chart that you'll see in the General and Police and Fire Resolutions called Special Pay. And these are mostly non-Civil Service, part-time, that are mostly open range or elected. The Director Pay, pay grades are in the Special Pay chart. Some department directors are Civil Service, some are not. But most would be paid according to these ranges of the Director Pay. We do have a few elected positions that are part of the pay plan, including Councilmember, Vice Mayor, Mayor, Public Defender. And then we have some part-time positions. The School Patrol Officers at Police, and the School Patrol Officers and Supervisors, and Library Page at Library are part-time. They're part of the Special Pay. And Judicial Services are for the Courts. And they're being non-Civil Service. They're in the Special Page chart. So, in your three resolutions you get, General, Police and Fire, and Health, you'll see as an appendix or an exhibit, the pay charts that go with those pay plans. So, the Police and Fire Pay Plan would have the Police and Fire charts, but you wouldn't see those with the General Government Resolution. They all would include the standard range and open range. They all use those charts. Of course, Health, the HD, Health Professional Chart, you would just see in the Health Resolution. But these will show you the pay grades for all the classifications that are used in those pay plans. So, that is who's covered and how the pay plans are structured. And I want to talk about how employees kind of move through these pay grades and how they receive increases. Most employees would receive two types of pay increases during a fiscal year. So, a cost-of-living adjustment would apply to everyone. It's not merit-based. Those adjustments raise the whole chart by 3.5%, 6% last year. Whatever the across-the-board cost-of-living increase is, the pay charts all go up that amount. A merit increase is how employees would move up through the pay range. So for steps, they would move from, say, step 2 to 3. For open range, they could move to any amount within that range. The step increments are roughly 3%. They usually happen on an anniversary date. So they could occur throughout the year, at a different time for a different employee. And it's usually on an anniversary date, like the date they were hired. They were hired in August, then they would be eligible for a step increase the following August. Or the day they were promoted into that class. So if they got promoted in November, they'd be eligible for a step the following November. Open range increases are budgeted at 3%. Departments receive a pool of funding that's 3% of the salaries of their employees on open range plans. And they can distribute that pool to those open-range employees. And it can vary based on performance. Some departments may choose to give everybody 3%. Some choose to vary it based on performance or whatever factors. They let us know what that methodology is in advance. And they, everyone has a common review date of July 1, and all those increases will be effective July 1. So, this is a visual of what that looks like. First in the step plans, then in the open range. So, let me get a pointer. So, when there's a cost-of-living adjustment, this is the original pay grade, say, current. Then, when there's a cost-of-living adjustment, that whole grade goes up by 3.5%. So, step 1 is increased 3.5%. Step 2's increased 3.5%. So, if this employee's on step 3, when there's a cost-of-living adjustment, 3.5%. Step 3 increases 3.5%. Employee stays on step 3, they receive 3.5% increase. Then, when it's time for their step increase, they would move up to step 4 and would receive another roughly 3%. So, the total increase from current after the COLA and the merit would be, in this case, a little more than 6.7%. So it includes the COLA amount and the merit increase. Similar for open range. When we have a cost-of-living adjustment, we would increase that whole range, the min and the max, up 3.5%, 6%, whatever the COLA is. And employees that are paid within that range would receive that same percentage. So this employee was at 70,000. They're receiving 3.5% to go up to 72,450. And then, for their merit increase, they get another 3%. Then they're going up more to 74,984. And that, from beginning to end, is a little, it's about 6.6%. So this shows the two increases employees get, COLA, and then moving up in the range with the merit. So, how do we recommend these changes that you see when you get these pay plan resolutions with changes? When we are doing any kind of study for recommending any kind of change, we're always trying to follow these three objectives: to be fair and equitable, and how the plans and policies are structured. We need to be able to recruit and retain employees so we can have adequate staffing to provide services. And we, they need to be fiscally responsible so they can be funded and implemented. The common changes that we propose are a cost-of-living increase, which is an across-the-board increase to all the charts and that all the employees would receive. And a market adjustment, which would be if a certain job, when we're doing our market research, looks a little bit low, and it would need an increase that's beyond what the across-the-board or the COLA is, then we might assign that job to another pay grade in the schedule. Or we might make an adjustment to that pay grade that makes it a little bit higher than whatever the COLA is. We also would sometimes recommend adding new classifications to the plans. And we also have a review of the living wage. And I'm going to, I'm going to talk about living wage more in a second. For what we look at to recommend a COLA is looking at trends in various metrics. So, mostly, we're looking at the CPIU, which is Consumer Price Index for all urban consumers, all items, all areas. And this index measures the changes in prices of things, consumer goods and services. Another index also that's tracked by the Bureau of Labor Statistics is the Employment Cost Index, which measures the cost of labor. So employers would look at this metric when, if you're trying to keep up with what your competitors are doing, how are they going to be raising wages? And we want to maintain our same market position. You would look at the Employment Cost Index to see what other employers are spending on wages. So, cost of labor versus cost of gas and groceries. The Employment Cost Index measures how wages are changing inclusive of any type of increase. So whether it's a COLA across-the-board, merit increases, promotional increases, any type of increase that is increasing the cost to employers to pay their employees would be included in the Employment Cost Index. Metro's wage growth is also a combination of these COLAs and the merit increases. So, this chart is showing the trend, and this is over the last 10 years. The red line is CPI. And this is the cumulative increase in the annual CPI for the last 10 years. The green line that starts here is the Employment Cost Index for government employers. And that's showing the cumulative increases for employment costs for state and local government employers. And then, the light blue line is what the cumulative Metro COLAs have been over the last 10 years. So, the 3.5% COLA that we're recommending this year keeps us right there when you're looking at this trend. This dark blue line includes the merit increases that are included in these pay plans that employees are eligible for. So, when you're including the cumulative COLAs and the roughly 3% merit increases, we are well ahead of the trend in inflation.
Question. For this particular chart, this is showing that our Metro all, not Metro all, Metro COLA, rather, is above our, the Consumer Index and the Employer Index. Is that what that's showing?
Well, at the beginning of this trend, it was. They are, the Metro COLAs don't always match exactly what CPI is. Sometimes it's, you know, the, occasionally mayors decided to increase our recommendation. Sometimes it's needed to be decreased based on economic conditions. So it doesn't always match. But the trend is, I mean, all three of these are roughly similar trends.
Right now, is it the same place?
Mm-hmm.
Just like Council did last year, they adjusted the COLA. So that COLA went up an extra 2%. So that gets caught up and that gets tracked as well. So, the Mayor has the right to change our recommended COLA. You all have the right to, because those are, that is the best indicator of a uniform adjustment, which is part of that legislative process that you guys have. Mayor has a right to do it. You all have another right to do it, and the final right to do it.
And I guess the point that I was trying to make or be clear on is, as a result of the trend and what has happened in the past previous years, we're at, we're at the same point. Our Metro COLA is at the same point as the Consumer Index and the Employer Index at this time.
Looking at the cumulative trend.
Okay.
I think we're within 2/10 of a percent. I think we're just above the 10-year lookback on CPIU, which is the greatest of the CPI indexes. That's the one we've historically used, but it is the highest historically.
Thank you for the clarification.
And colleagues, I did want to make sure that you all know, this presentation is on the SharePoint. So, if you want to follow along on your computers, it's on our SharePoint page.
The next type of recommendations we would make would be market adjustments. So those are when we would recommend upgrading jobs, for example. So, we review jobs that have issues in recruiting and retention. We have an ongoing communication with our operating departments and our talent acquisition team to keep kind of an issues list of where are we struggling? What do we need to look at this year? And then we would use a variety of sources to gather salary data from public and private sectors, whoever we're competing with for these types of jobs. And we would recommend an adjustment when Metro's pay is too low. Our goal is for our job's midpoint to be at or near the market median. So we're, we're So, we're, we're trying to be right there in the middle. So, when we recommend changes to grades that are a little beyond the COLA or upgrading jobs to civil service commission where we want to change the grade assignment for this job, that's, that's what these market adjustments are. The living wage, we have a civil service policy that requires us to recommend a living wage or a minimum hourly rate to our civil service commission. We look at the MIT Living Wage Calculator for Davidson County for guidance on what this recommended minimum hourly rate should be. And we use a multi-year average to recommend this rate, rate for full-time employees. And we aim to set the base rate of our lowest full-time pay grade for, for the full-time jobs to that minimum hourly rate. So, you'll see this year, that, that grade, that's the lowest for full-time jobs is ST5. And step one of that is set at $20 an hour. The plans that we've recommended for this year are following our usual practices that have been in place for many years for recommending upgrades and changes, COLAs to our pay plans. Some of these policies need to be looked at. We've been using them for a long time and, you know, maybe we need to refresh. So, we've been engaged with Mercer Human Resources Consulting since October of last year. And we're wrapping up that comprehensive view of our salaries and benefits as they compare to our peers. And we're working with them on recommendations for how we can improve our policies and implementation practices, including our philosophy of where we want to position ourselves in the market, how do we want to handle these implementations, what the ongoing maintenance of our pay structure should look like. So, they're taking a deep dive on all that with us. And we expect to wrap up all of that within the next couple of months. And we should be communicating results from that coming up soon so we can plan future changes to the compensation structures and practices to prepare beginning that for next July for those recommendations. That is concluding Pay Plan 101.
Thank you for that very comprehensive explanation. We will go ahead and go into some questions. I have a few questions to kick us off. And then, colleagues, I will recognize everyone regardless of if you're on the Budget and Finance Committee or not. Can we go to that $20 an hour for the living wage calculation? Could you explain again how you all got to that? Because I, I don't know if I'm looking at the chart correctly, but it looks like it's 23 an hour for one adult. So, I'm trying to figure out how we get to the 20.
We are looking at the trend of the last three years, which is not on the slide. But the, the current MIT rate for living wage went up about 30% this year.
Largest jump we've seen.
From 1,835 to 2368. And that was, came out February 14th, the day before we were set to meet with finance and the mayor to talk about our recommendations that we already had. So, we are looking at the trend. We expect we'll need to take another bite of the living wage issue next year because it's just going nowhere but up rapidly. So, the three-year trend for the MIT for Davidson County is 1,989, if you look at the last three years. And we're recommending the $20 an hour, which is a little bit higher than that just to recognize that it is increasing. And, you know, this is an ongoing thing that we're really gonna need to take a look at.
And Chair Porterfield, this was one of the things on the slide, and we talked a lot about this. Last year, while in the work with Mercer, we're really having them, like, take a deep dive, looking at everything we're doing. What are we doing, should we be making adjustments? Living wage was one of the components we had them look at. And we said, are other people doing living wage? Is MIT the right living wage calculator? Are there better metrics we should be using? How are people going about this? And one of their responses was that the majority of employers are not using living wage. They don't settle living wage. The majority of employers use it more aspirationally as a, that's interesting to note, and they just note it. But for the ones that are using the living wage, they said that the MIT Living Wage Calculator was a good metric. And they said, but we, not only did the majority of them not use, look at the living wage, but when they do, they do a blended year rate. And they said that they see most employers are using a multi-year rate somewhere between two and five years. So, it looked like the predominant, their feedback was predominantly, most people use three. And that seemed like a middle, it felt like five was maybe a little too long. So, we adopted the three-year blended living rate. But it did validate some things for us, like, yes, this is the right, because there are a number of different living wage calculators depending on which one you're looking at. And they said this one was probably the most data-driven. But one of the things, they did a lot of deep dive with MIT because they also have been changing their philosophy about how they calculate this. And they haven't always been as clear about what they've included year over year, but it is not apples to apples. They're at least disclosing that. Mercer tried to get a little more insight from them, but they said they couldn't provide as much insight as to what has changed, but that they did note that they had changed a number of the indices that they were measuring.
Okay, thank you. And then, as we're looking at increasing the, what we consider, what Metro is considering a living wage, are we looking at adjustments throughout the scale so that we're not having compression?
Yes, so we are increasing the, those lowest two pay grades for ST5 and 6. The trades schedule is already, with the three and a half percent COLA, would be, would meet that living wage already. There won't be any compression in those two pay grades for employees in those jobs. They would receive that little bit of an additional increase. But they would all, just the way our usual implementation plan where you get at least the COLA and then go on a step, they do keep their step. That math works out. So, they do get a little bit of the additional increase and there won't be any compression in that demand.
Okay, thank you.
Compression explained.
Uh, go ahead. Thank you.
Can we get a compression explained?
Can you explain compression for?
Compression is when you, employees kind of get bunched up at the bottom of the pay range. And so, you're bringing in new employees nearer the rate of your existing employees. We would not have a situation where new employees would come in at a rate higher than an existing employee. But when an existing employee has been, say, four steps ahead of base and now they're only three, that would be a case that's compressing.
Okay, thank you. And I, I have just a few more, and then I'll turn it over to some of the questions in the, for my other colleagues. It was brought to my attention, and I would like for us to be able to discuss this. So, I have not fact-checked this, so I, so I am putting it out there, I've not fact-checked. I would love for y'all to speak to it. That the CPI is 4.1% and that the ECI is either 4.6 or 4.8. But last year, we used the ECI to justify the COLA. But this year, we're using the CPI to justify the COLA. So, I don't know if that's accurate, but I would love for you all to, to speak, speak to that process.
I would say it's both. We are looking at not just the COLA, but other increases that employees also get. So, we're also looking at the merit increase to compare. Like, for ECI, for government, there's different, you can get regional, you can get the ECI for different employment sectors, like the public sector, private sector. The public sector ECI, I believe for last calendar year was 5%. And I think the overall private sector one was maybe 4.8. If you look at the, our recommended COLA and the merit increases, that's gonna be six and a half when the employees receive both of those.
Can you go back to that slide so they can see that definition? So, just a reminder that ECI, and I wouldn't characterize, I understand what you're asking, Chair Porterfield, but I wouldn't characterize it that way. We, when we were proposing our COLA last year, we were doing a 10-year look back on the historical. And our proposed COLA met the 10-year look back. The COLA we're proposing this year looks at the 10-year look back on CPIU and it matches. And then, so, we didn't, we weren't trying to, we weren't trying to, like, flip-flop and pick which one worked, right? Because they're different metrics, right? CPIU is the cost of goods. And we, when we're proposing COLAs, typically, we're looking at a 10-year look back. And so, the COLA we proposed last year got us the 10-year look back to, to keep us in market on the 10-year look back. The same is true this year on the COLA for CPIU. ECI is the cost of all increases, not just COLA, right? Any increase. So, it could be promotions, merit, COLA altogether. That wage increase, I think, is somewhere in the 4% range that you're speaking of. But our total wage increase that we're proposing is 6.5%. The three and a half percent COLA and the 3% merit. So, we are still above market, which is the reason why, if you look on the pie chart, we're so much higher. Our, not everybody offers, that's another trend that we're seeing. We started seeing it last year, the past couple of years with a number of public sector employers, but it's getting validated by Mercer now. Most employers don't give a COLA and merit together as consistently as Metro. So, they don't usually give a COLA every year or a merit every year. But we do very consistently give both. And that's the way we've built a pay structure. So, we're asking Mercer, should we be doing it like that? So, this is a good example. Our wage growth in any given year is the combination of what we're proposing for merit and COLA. So, it's 6.5%, which is about two points higher than the ECI number, which is also an all-inclusive number. So, that's wage to wage.
Okay, thank you. And then, for the, the step and COLA and the open range and COLA, both of those are at about 6.5, 6.6? Okay. And then, can you explain to us who's on a one-year step versus who's on a two-year step? I know you gave an example, I think police and fire may have been one year, but how is it determined who's on one and who's on two?
This has evolved over time since the 90s. These 10-step pay schedules were, started back in 1993. And at that time, all of the, all jobs were on steps. And the, up to step five was annual. And then, step five and, five, six and seven maybe were every two years. And then, eight and nine were every three years. And over time, we have reduced the time employees wait at the top of the range to get those steps. The rationale was that, you know, we're setting our midpoint of our pay grades at the market median. So, we're bringing employees, we're hiring at base. So, we're bringing employees up pretty rapidly to step five. And then, they slow down a little bit as they get above market, moving toward our maximum. So, over time, we have reduced the schedules for some of these pay charts. And it's been mostly public safety that has now been changed to where they're all annual. So, the police, fire, and corrections, park police would be included with police. Those charts are all annual, they don't have any two-year steps. For trades, this, the ST chart, which has a variety of jobs on it, and the emergency communications, they do still have the two-year steps at the top of the range. So, it is true that not every single employee is eligible for a merit increase. Once you reach the max, then you're at max. And then, you would receive the COLA when that chart goes up. If you're at the max or you're in the first year of a two-year step, then you wouldn't necessarily be eligible for a merit increase next year. There are only about 600 employees in that situation out of the 9,500 that are on these plans.
Would it be more equitable to have everyone on a one-year step as opposed to only having public safety on a one-year step?
I think that is a likely recommendation for next year.
Okay, thank you. And then, my, my last question, and then we'll, we'll open it up. Actually, last two questions. Can you sell us how merit is determined? That it sounded as though it is up to maybe a department head or someone in the department as to how they're going to do it. And that, that doesn't sound very, that sounds a little subjective. So, just trying to get a good understanding of how, how merit is determined.
So, merit comes in one of two forms, either as a step increase or an open range. Two-thirds of Metro employees are on step. There is no discretion on step. So, two-thirds, there's zero discretion. It is, do you pass your evaluation? If so, you get the full step up to dollar amount certain. So, that's two-thirds of the organization. If you do not pass your annual evaluation, you don't get the step. Or, there might be a performance improvement plan, then a check-in for your ability to get it at a later date when you have demonstrated sufficient performance. Open range is the last third. Those are more of your professional classifications, management classifications. They are typically, that is typically a model that's considered performance-based. But there can be a number of different methodologies that are used to kind of make sure that you give different percentages. So, in my case, right, the majority of our department is an open range. We get funding at 3% for all of those in open range. Those that are on steps in my department get dollar certain, those can't be touched. They likely pass their evaluations, they'll get that. And then, I would submit, and every department head has to submit, an open range methodology that explains how they are going to give open range based on, there may be pay equity issues that, like, have presented themselves. There could be things like time and longevity for a person or lack thereof. There could be performance-based issues taking on special projects. So, there can be a number of factors, but all of those methodologies have to be submitted by departments in advance. Those are then reviewed and approved by our office. And then, those people that are in open range, their department heads would have, would be bound to that methodology. So, I, I use a lot of pretty objective things as a department head that has to do this, right? I look at performance across the department, and I'm really tying a lot of things to performance. I'm also looking at whether or not we have someone who's lower in the range, right? Much like we're talking about, because we set our market median right at the middle. Those that are lower in the range are getting paid lower than market. And I want to keep these new hungry employees, like, or else we're having a retention issue. So, sometimes, the lower in the range may compensate a little bit higher a percentage. Some of those that are seasoned, that are higher in the range, those percentages in higher pays compound differently, right? A 3% for somebody making $60,000 compounds differently than a 3% for a $70,000 or $75,000 pay, right? So, those percentages may change from that perspective.
Would it be more equitable if everybody was just on steps and we didn't have open range?
It's interesting. It could be equitable. It also may not, I would say, and certainly, this is getting validated by Mercer, for professional classifications, it's standard to have what we're doing, a combination of. And I think we're such a big organization, I don't think there's a one-size-fits-all. It would make it equitable, but at the same time, you would not be paying people for performance. So, you would really, in some ways, be starting to encourage in some of these more subjective categories, doing sufficient work rather than rising above and beyond to distinguish yourself. So, there, it is definitely, open range is meant to be a pay-for-performance model as its primary component. And that's certainly the way, as somebody who, we were one of the first people that came up in open range. Like, first year I was here, we got changed to open range because HR analyst was on a step. I was over the moon. I was like, yes! Like, but it doesn't always promote the same level of performance. We've got a lot of employees that are performing pretty high. But it's, yes, you're right, you take all the subjectivity out of it, for sure.
Okay, thank you. And then, my last question is about the $20 an hour. Getting all Metro government employees to $20 an hour is currently in the mayor's budget, but it does not include getting MMPS employees to $20 an hour. And I don't know if you all will have this. And I don't know if you all will have this, um, information or if we need to get this from MMPS. But, um, it's my understanding, the, the information that's been presented to me is that it's seven million to go up half a percent in the COLA. So, if we wanted to go from 3.5 percent COLA to a 4 percent COLA, we're looking at $7 million. But it's going to be $9 million to get those MMPS employees that are making less than 20 an hour up to $20 an hour. And ideally, we would do both, but if we have to choose, um, making sure that we have the correct data that we need to, to ensure a, a good, you know, decision. And, and I just did some really quick math, but I would love if you all have data on this, if you can share this with us. But doing some really quick math, if someone is making, uh, let's say $40,000 a year and, and we're looking at it from a 3 percent COLA to a 4 percent COLA, that's maybe going up $200 a year. At $50,000, you're going up to $50 a year. At $60,000, you're going up $300 a year. At $100,000, you're going up $500 a year. So, for that $7 million to go up half a percent in a COLA, we're looking at employees making from 40 to 100,000 a year, they're getting an extra 200 to 500 a year. And if you juxtapose that to the individuals that are making $18 an hour, trying to get them up to $20 an hour, again, just super quick math, so I would need, I would need the real, the real data. But the, the quick math, at about seven and a half hours a day, the roughly 200 school days a year. So, someone making 18 bucks an hour will be making about $27,000 a year. As opposed to someone making $20 an hour will be making closer to $30,000 a year. So, that would get, uh, people going from 18 an hour to 20 an hour. That would actually be a more substantial increase for them of about $3,000. Juxtapose that, so if they were making 18 an hour and we went from 3.5 percent COLA to 4 percent COLA, that's only an extra $145 a year as opposed to $3,000 a year. So, my question in all of that. One, I wanted to outline that, again, just quick and dirty numbers, but I would love the, 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 your, you all's interpretation to get the correct information so that this body can have that information as we're looking to, to make a determination. Again, I would love to be able to do both, but if it comes down to only being able to do one, I want to make sure that we have the correct data, so that we can make that decision. And also just getting some data around if that, uh, getting the MMPS employees up to 20 an hour, does that $9 million include, um, only, uh, full-time employees? Or if it's full-time and part-time employees? So, if you have any answers on that or any, any comments on that now, would love to hear them. If not, um, if you all could prepare it and send it out.
Hey, I have a few comments. Okay, one, and I, I'm going to look at Erin here, because he and I, we've been laughing about some of these dialogues back and forth. 1 percent COLA for us is eight and a half million dollars.
Who is us, government or?
Metro government. I'm so sorry. We are the general government. MMPS is a separate employer. You guys happen to fund them, but they are a separate employer altogether. Now, the funding streams, I want to acknowledge.
You said, oh, you said 1 percent COLA?
A 1 percent COLA.
For general government.
For general government, which includes police and fire and health, but not schools, is 8.5 million. I thought I heard seven, so I want to make sure I say that.
I think the seven is for half a percent for MMPS and general government is the number that was given to me.
I think what, so what we're doing is, uh, that's across all funds, 8.6, but fund broken down, general funds, $7 million. Half a percent is 3, 3.5 million, so 3.5 million for general government.
Yeah.
3.5 million for MMPS at a half a percent.
Okay, okay. We, so, MMPS is a separate employer, so we have zero insight into them. They are the only people, and certainly some of that has been obviously shared with Erin, which is how he can then help quantify that with MMPS. I would make a general observation about just bringing anybody up to $20 or whatever, whatever wage you want it to be. It is not as easy as just pushing the bottom up, because that is exactly the compression and the structure that you want to maintain. My advice to council, whether you were talking to MMPS or hospital authority, any other separate kind of sister agency, my advice would be that you say to them, we would like to set a pay minimum for full-time employees, like general government does. Give them a, a, an amount or something like that. It can change obviously over time like ours does. And have them propose back a pay structure and have that costed. As an example, um, and I don't know, so these are, just know that I'm just speaking off the cuff because I have zero insight into what they do. If it's, for example, cafeteria workers, there may be a cafeteria worker that, cafeteria worker one, and that pay minimum is, let's say, 18. And then a cafe, a ca- cafeteria worker two is at 19. And then the shift leader's at 20. And then the manager is at 21. If you take the bottom and you move it up, you move everybody up. And so, now, the entry-level caf- cafeteria worker one, two, and shift lead are all making the same amount, even though they have different jobs, different levels of responsibility. And that creates huge pay inequities and will collapse their structure, their pay structure and their functional structure. So, it's not just as easy as pushing that out. What you want to do is be able to create a structure, because it, it needs to index up so you don't create that inequity or that pay structure. But each pay structure is a little bit different. It may be different for, um, cafeteria workers, maybe different from bus drivers, maybe different from, um, teachers assistants. And whatever that structure is, which may vary greatly, compound, count, compounding parts of that is they have a very large, usually a multi-step, well beyond what we have. I don't know what it's like for support staff at schools, but I think teachers still have a 25-step, 20-plus step.
Twenty.
Yeah. And that is extra, that makes my head like almost hurt. That's, that is a complexity that I would have them propose this pay structure and say, this is what we would do. And you would put the people you want at the bottom of the minimum rate and have them propose an equitable pay structure that met that back to you and you guys have that costed. That would be the responsible way for, it doesn't matter what organi- it, it would be the nice thing that you would do with us if you wanted to ask us the same or any other organization.
So, you all have already done that, because in the mayor's proposed budget, it is putting all full-time employees at $20 an hour. So, general government has already created this pay structure.
Because we're the only one that has a policy that, that compels me to do so, yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So, with that, uh, Vice Chair, do you have any questions? I'll start with you, okay? None from the Vice Chair. So, I will go, I, I saw your hand, but I saw, uh, Erin Evans' hand first. So, if anyone would like to be recognized, if you could just raise your hand really quickly, I'll get a running list going. So, I saw Council Lady Evans, I saw Council Lady Stiles, I saw Council Lady Vo. Any other questions starting off on the first round? All right, Council Lady Evans, you're recognized.
Thank you. I just, um, wanted to know if you could, uh, kind of, and may tag on to what you just talked about related to MMPS and general government. But with the Mercer pay plan study, is that restricted to general government? Okay, so anything with MMPS, they're going to do their own separate pay plan related, or study related to like, uh, board members, for instance? Because we've been having a conversation about them.
School board member a little different? We can talk about that too. But they are, as a separate employer, they are not under our purview, we can't study them. They are a sys- a very important sister agency, so, and, and very important to you guys because you fund us both, right? School board pay in the Metro Charter, um, is to be studied and proposed as part of our general government pay plans. I assume that the, and it's been in the Charter that way for quite some time. I assume the rationale there was that your own staff should not be proposing, proposing the pay of its leaders. They are also the only border commissioner at Metro who is compensated, right? Of the 70-plus boards and commissions, school board members are the only board compensated. So, um, the Charter says that we study that pay and then recommend that pay. Not through us.
It is, thank you.
Okay.
Sorry, I used to go that board, I used to receive like $40 a day.
I, I believe that. But, um, this, this does get a pay that comes out of us that, or out of schools that funds them a pay. But for some reason, that is in the Charter for us to study and pay, so.
And so, it will not be part of the Mercer study that you're doing or will be part of the?
We heard the council last year saying, hey, should we? Like, we've heard a number of parties, including the council, kind of say, hey, we should look at this again. So, I think this is something that we, even if it's, uh, it may not be part of this study, but it's on our radar of things of interest to be studied in the next year or two. I mean, I, I think we, um, the other kind of challenging component is the Charter also says that they have staggered terms. So, we are going to be in an implementation phase where we propose a pay increase and only part of them will get it. They'll all, as the new terms start is when the pay increases for each of those seats will occur. That's another one of those, like, both kind of in conflict, but I think a reality that we're accepting and sounds like I think a number of the school board members understand, so.
And I'll send a follow-up email, but can we get a list? We talk a lot about the, um, struggle to fill positions, but not as much about retention. And I think that came up in some of the budget, or at least one that I remember, budget hearings from last week. And so, I'll send it in via the council office. I'd like to get, like, what are the positions that we're struggling to retain? And then I think Chair Porterfield probably got all my other questions.
Thank you, Council Lady Evans. Uh, Councilwoman Stiles, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Chair. I actually have two questions, so a little bit to piggyback off of Councilmember Evans' question. I know the, the school board budget chair came to speak to the Women's Caucus and was asking about this issue. You're saying that this is on the list for things in a year or two. What do we need to do so that it's upcoming for your next action items? I know, because they're aware that it's staggered.
Yeah.
But to know that this is next up on the docket immediately. I know it came up and I, I, when I reached out, someone else was supposed to be doing it, but I don't think it's included in this particular pay study. But, so that we can get it moved forward.
Are we speaking about Frida?
Well, Frida and also, um, Rachel, Rachel Anne, they both came and shared all this information. So, certainly, Women's Caucus was supportive of them getting this. So, I'd like to know how we do it immediately or what's next.
I think, I think we're just trying to find a little bit of funding. There are, there are a couple of different strategies we talked about, um, where there might be, you know, we could certainly, with funding, do a compensation study like we do for council members. We could do something like that. I think we had some other kind of strategies that we had shared back that the, we could get data from the school board that helped to at least age COLAs, right? That that would be another, like, very valid metric that would help to significantly increase pay in a way that is requisite. I also, um, it is not lost on me too, that I want to make sure that the pay is equitable, because we care about everybody in construct of everybody else. The pay is equitable not only to the school board, but in, like, relation to what you all are paid, right? Like, you can't look at everything just in a vacuum. So, I think we're trying to think through a number of those strategies, but it's definitely, I think it's something that we can be studying for sure in the next year. I know there was interest in having it, um, possibly before August. I don't know that that's possible, but I think very shortly thereafter, I'm hoping that's something we can do.
If you had funding, could you do it before August? Because it, it's on many of our wish lists from Women's Caucus to get that study done.
So, part of the challenge is that it has to come through the pay plan.
Okay.
Um, and so, it's not in the pay plan. So, it has to follow the pay plan process, which means two readings by the, um, Civil Service Commission, pay study recommended by us, two readings by Civil Service Commission on two different dates. And then follow its requisite process for you guys to either amend a pay plan mid-year, which doesn't happen often, but could happen, or be part of the next cycle in your budget cycle naturally, right? Because we are coming back to you. Any year that, we've been on a every-year pay plan. At some point, I think there's a lot of appetite to return maybe to a multi-year, maybe like a two-year pay plan and possibly step in. But right now, we're on an annual basis with you. So, I think by default, it can likely be scooped up in the next year pay plan or amended as part of a amendment in the middle of the year.
Excellent. Thank you very much for that information. And then, lastly, for the Health Department. So, I'm speaking with Director Harrington specifically for Metro Animal Care and Control. Is that a study that we can request just for them, not for all of Health, just for them? Because they generally don't get a lot of attention and I don't know that their pay has been looked at significantly.
We could work with Board of Health, there.
Or with Director Harrington, because she's more reliable.
Yeah, we can, um, we obviously study and recommend pay and Health Department typically goes along with us. And we certainly assist as part of that, but they are a separate civil service by Charter. So, that's something we can definitely open a dialogue about. I don't know if that was on our radar list, but we can definitely check into that and get back with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Lady Stiles. And Director Hall, can you clarify? I just want to get some clarification on something Council Lady Stiles just said. Do we, do you all need additional funding allocated to be able to study the school board's compensation? Or are you able to do that with the budget that you currently have?
We may need some more, like, some small funding for some compensation validation or a study. The answer is yes. Metro HR would need it.
And that would, uh, could you find out how much that would be and give that to us?
Um, yes.
Okay, thank you. Council Lady Vo, you are recognized.
Thank you, Chair. I just had a quick question. When y'all were talking about the $20 an hour for full-time, um, uh, workers. So, can you explain, like, then what is the pay for a part-time? Is that lower than, or, and then how many employees would that be?
Yeah, I can take at least the first part of that. I don't know, we started talking about a little bit of the second question that you had. So, for part-time employees, they, part-time employees are not civil service and so they're not necessarily under necessarily our purview. Uh, a good example of a department, there's not a ton of these departments, but a good department that is really unique in Metro is Parks, right? Half the staff is like full-time, right, year-round. And then they beef up to double half their staff as seasonal part-time, which is extraordinary. That is a challenge that I don't, no other department faces year over year over year. So, the seasonal part-time components are under the purview legally of the Parks Board. And so, um, they will set a pay structure commiserate on those functions and duties related to part-time seasonal work. Know that, um, I know this was a, I think a question maybe I got from Councilmember Swora, and I want to make sure just for the group. We are not trying to just single out full-time workers when we're setting our minimum wage. That is, um, a standard methodology for living wage. So, you can Google any, there are a number of living wage components, the Global Living Wage Initiative, MIT Living Wage Calculator. All of the living wage contemplates full-time employment and a standard work week, right? What is the minimum that someone would need to, uh, make in order to afford decent housing, transportation, food, et cetera? So, um, that, the philosophy behind the living wage and setting that minimum wage, it contemplates a full-time employment. That's the reason why it says the minimum wage that Metro will set will be, you know, we recommend a living wage on full-time employment. We use that term because that's the way, um, the industry that is defined living wage defines it as a living wage term, like a full-time term, if that makes sense. Not because we're trying to handle part-time work differently, that's just how that's structured and that's what's under our purview. But the Parks Board sets that pay structure. We have assisted them when requested in the past to help study those pay structures. I think we did it last year.
I think about two years ago.
Yeah, they had asked for our help and so we helped to review and recommend a pay structure. I'm not sure that they chose to recommend changes to those structures this year.
And so, are they the majority that has part-time or there are other departments as well?
There's a handful. Uh, let me say this. The part-time employees in departments that use our classifications are going to get the hourly pay just at the reduced hour rate. As an example, I have an employee that is part-time in my office, um, who is in a particular classification. She's getting paid the same hourly rate as the full-time person, the same classification, just at the reduced hours that she's working. So, if they are part-time employees in civil service departments using our classifications, they're, they're more than meeting the $20 an hour. They're just getting a reduced pay based on their reduced hours.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Lady Vo. Councilwoman Ms. Povida, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. Two questions, maybe I missed this. When is the Mercer recommendations due?
We are hoping in the next couple of months. We are continuing to refine and they're going to give us a more robust set of, um, because we're asking them to kind of not just look at classifications like we have in the past, but really look at our whole compensation structure. So, we're hoping in the next couple of months. And then that's going to pretty much start a really deep dog dive dialogue, kind of talking about which one of those things we would want to recommend. Typically, when we get recommendations coming out of a big pay study, there are usually so many, you know, we'll need to decide which ones we want to adopt. And then usually there is a multi-year implementation structure, because it is simply too much change and too costly to implement in one year, but you want to do so responsibly. So, the goal would be that we really start to talk about this with the commission going into the fall and that would be through public means. Um, and really start figuring out a communication strategy so that employees know what's coming before it comes. Um, and really start figuring out a communication strategy so that employees know what's coming before it comes, if that makes any sense.
Okay. When would that be shared with the council?
I think shortly after we start making the decisions with the commission on what kind of implementations are gonna happen.
But the full recommendation would be, the Mercer report would be shared with the council, not just the civil service?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
And then my second question is, is Mercer looking at all positions, including those that are hired on by boards and commissions?
When you say hired on by boards and commissions?
So Arts Commission, they hire their executive director. Library Board hires their executive director. Are they looking at those positions as well to me?
They're looking at a number of the-
Yeah, there are a number of director level positions that are benchmarks that they're reviewing pay data for.
Okay.
But many of the employees within, um, those departments are civil service. So the Arts Department employees are civil service, follow under our pay plans, getting studied through, because we're studying hundreds of classifications.
I just want to make sure that they're on there if, if these boards and commissions are the ones making the hire fire and then any proposed, you know, salary, like I want them to make sure they have all of the information if the structure is gonna continue that way.
Yeah.
Okay. And then the question about part-time employees and the Parks Board being an example, the Parks Department being an example, right? So I, I would be interested to see what turnover looks like, what unfilled positions remain. Um, just based on, should we consider a department such as Parks having full-time employees throughout the year instead of just part-time? Um, especially if certain departments have a hard time hiring staff on? Is that something you all are looking at as well?
Not, not necessarily, um, because they're not under our purview, um, those part-time positions. So half of, I would, I, I hate to generalize this, but about half the department are full-time. And they would be under our purview, right? They are civil service employees, full-time, year-round. Um, there will be vacancies there. I don't know what the number of vacancies are there. I think that is one component. And then the seasonal part-time, that's not under our purview. That's under the purview of the board. And so what I hear your question to be is, have they contemplated, if they have vacancies in that part-time seasonal, whether they should make them full-time?
Yeah, so I, I think a lot of these boards that are in charge of hire-fire, that are in charge of certain policies with their own staff, right? I don't know if they have all of the information. I don't know if they have the best plan, and I don't know how much help they receive from HR. I, I feel like there is a big gap that we're not taking care of. And maybe it's due to how it is structured, and some of these we can't change, right? They're, it's set up by charter. Um, it's under the state, uh, the ordinance ones we could take a look at, but for the ones that we cannot change unless we have a charter, like amendment, a charter revision, like what help, what resources are we providing to them to make sure that they have the best information to take these decisions?
We are often engaging departments on that. I mean, the, um, we could use, like, for example, arts, um, like we, within their, like, they have a pay range. We have two pay ranges. The only one they have discretion over is the director. Um, ma- many of these structures are just over the director. Um, so for that, they're, they're either in a DP one or DP two, usually a DP one, because these are typically the smaller departments. They have less functions, smaller staffs, smaller budgets. So they're in the DP one range. And so we are like, this is the pay range, this is the budget amount you have. Um, when they are hiring those directors, um, much like it was last time, um, when they were handling those. I offered to, when we brought these finalists, because we conducted that recruitment, we offered to facilitate the offer on behalf of the Arts Commission, because the, to your point, Arts Commissioners aren't employees. They don't know what the benefit package is. They don't know what the pay provisions are. And so with the board's action and meeting, I then facilitated those offerings on their behalf. And then we support them on their pay structures and what their funding is in the budgets, just like all of their employees that are civil service that we do have purview over. We tell them what the merit percentage is, zero to fifteen percent. Um, but ultimately legally, they have discretion as long as they have funding to give increases. And I would say in particular, the increase that was given last year, there was quite a bit of engagement that we tried to have to make sure that they were right sizing that.
But not the part-time and the seasonal employees?
Not the part-time and seasonal, right? Not the ones that are under our purview, but we, like I said, we, like, if Parks wants our support, like, we offer that support. We did help study their pay structure, their part-time seasonal. They have a different legal purview. We offer our services, but they're not required to use us.
So my last example, the library board, right? They didn't go through HR. They hired an outside company to do that. Were you all involved at all? Like, if that, if that is the ca- if that is the scenario, are, do you all recommend as well? And just leave it up to the contract?
Yes, on the front end, we recommended that they use us. And I personally did that. Um, so I made that recommendation. I outlined the suite of services that we'd offer. Um, certainly that's more efficient. We've, we overhauled that process when I came back to HR um, and really have tried to really hone in and make that process really good. So yes, I made that offer. The library board legally had the authority to do something different, and they did. Um, the only part of the process that was involved was the legally required one, which was using Rigel as part of their interview of their candidates.
Those are all my questions.
Thank you, Council Lady Povida. And I'm going to call on Council Lady Sorora, because that, the Parks question did come up during our budget hearing, so I'm gonna, uh, let Council Lady Sorora, uh, give that explanation.
Thank you, Chair. And, uh, following my email to you, uh, that was one of the reasons why we asked that question, especially in the part-timer and the seasonal employees, and Parks is the one that has the most, and, uh, for those of you that did not watch the hearing, go back and look at it. But basically what Director Hodam said was that the ones that are part-time typically tend to make about the same as the regular employee. The ones that are less than twenty are usually the seasonal employee, and this is where they actually get students. And they get retirees, and so that, what they pay them is based on the job that is required. And so that's, that's how they, they come about that, so I just wanted to, to at least offer that, that we did ask that question of Parks. Uh, and so they don't know what work would be needed for that season, and they usually will use people that are just looking, especially students that are just looking for something to do in that, maybe some job or something like that. Uh, I do agree with Councilmember Supovida on the points though, that no matter the mechanism that they're using or how they come about it, since you guys have a system and a way of looking at things, it would be good, uh, if they seek your assistance, so at least take a look at it to make sure that it's equitable and doing what it's supposed to do. I agree with the hiring of the directors as well. We know the debacle that happened at the library, uh, 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 over all of that. So I think that our lack of consistency is what is the problem here, where one area is doing one thing and the other area is doing something. And when we're talking about MMPS and it almost looks as if we were talking about it as another entity, like they're different over there. And we're over here, to us, it shouldn't be like that. And I think that since we're metro government, we need to find a way to make sure that we're talking to each other, and we're avoiding all that silos, and we're looking at how do we make sure that whatever we're doing in section A is what B and C and D are doing as well. So that would just be my, my, my suggestion.
I completely agree. They are easily our closest sister agency. There's a lot of collaboration, um, especially since we're all existing in the same kind of architectural, financial, and HR system. So we are working with our MMPS partners as strong as any of them. So yes, please, I meant, I mean to distinguish that so that there's not frustration from council, and while we don't have the answers for, about MMPS, not meant at all to be, they're separate. They're not part of us. Um, the support staff at schools are under our benefit system, so I have a, I have a particular interest in them all the time. And benefits policy is my background here. So, um, I really do view them as part of us, especially the support staff who are part of our benefit system. And I completely agree with you, Councilmembers Supovida and Council Lady Swora. I would like to make sure you know, I one hundred percent offer our executive recruiting services to every single metro department. Some are required to use me, um, but we do a good job, and most of the time, people choose to use us. So I do think that it's better, you get more flies with honey that way. We've got a really good process, but I one hundred percent, we make the offer every single time to assist any board or commission. Um, it would then be their, if they had the option, their unilateral decision to do something different, but we will always make the offer, and we're committed to that for sure.
If I may ask on that, for the executive search, when you guys do it, if HR should do it, is there a cost involved? And do you bear that cost, or does the department do it? Because when they do it on their own, we typically have to give them money. So if there's no money, they use you, that would be another reason why we should be looking at that.
Yes, I am the cheap option. All of our services are, and I won't say like completely free, but all of our services, all the professional services, all the coordination, we do a lot of heavy lift out of our talent acquisition team. Um, all of that is free of charge. That is the salary that you're paying us to do. Um, the only cost that we would have would be, um, we like to do, especially when we're doing a really deep dive outreach, is we will reach out to local, state, national organizations, and sometimes there's a fee associated with promoting our job through those. We will, the department will help us pay for that fee. Typically, that could be a few hundred dollars to a couple of thousand dollars. And then, um, we usually work with the department to make sure that we can, um, if there are outside candidates outside the region that we need to bring in, we really do try to give them the red carpet. I mean, they're trying us on the same way we're trying them on. So paying for airfare, hotel, accommodations, those types of things, we would, uh, work, we would usually pay those upfront and then have those reassessed by the department, but that's usually within, again, a couple hundred to a couple of thousand dollars. So yes, all of our services are free, but very minimal cost to the department that usually can be easily absorbed. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Uh, I have two more, and then we'll see if there are any remaining questions. And, uh, if there are not any questions, then we're gonna go ahead and jump into the play, pay plan portion of the, uh, wishlist, just to kind of level set the expectation, expectation for everyone. Um, one of my questions, uh, Director Hall, um, does every, every metro employee, general government, and schools, does every employee get the COLA and a step, or the COLA and a merit? Is there any situation where some, where a full-time employee only gets one form of compensation?
Yes. Um, I can't speak to schools, but for general government, um, most employees get both. But if an employee is at the maximum of their range, and there's no more steps, or they're at their maximum of the range with open range, they would only get the COLA. Um, if they are on an off-year, on this, the two-year step towards the top of the range, then if they're on an off-year, they would get the COLA, they would not get the step. Are there any other situations I could think of? Yeah, it's about six hundred.
About six hundred employees would be in that.
That are in those scenarios.
Those situations at the max or near the top in the two-year step scenario.
Okay. But the study that you all are doing, that we may receive hopefully in October or later this year, that study will help determine changes or recommendations that we would need to make in a pay plan to make it more equitable?
I mean, that's the goal. I mean, we, we want to be within market. We want to be equitable. We want to, are, are these the right compensation practices to recruit and retain employees? I mean, ultimately, that's the business we're in. The city runs when we keep employees, and we pay them fairly so they keep doing those services to support our community. So that would be the goal for sure. Um, but yeah, we, that's what we plan on bringing back.
Okay, thank you. And my last question, um, during one of the budget hearings, maybe it was schools, I can't remember. They all are running together. We've had about five hundred and seventy-six of them, but, um, in one of those presentations, there was a comment made about uh, general government and schools possibly combining, I, I don't know if this was looking at benefits or, or how we're doing pay plans, but that there, um, maybe was some conversation about being able to, um, save money if we are combining those resources? It look, you, that doesn't look like that sounds familiar to you.
Not necessarily in the way you described it, but the, um, there is like, we are continuing to, in order to reach maximum efficiency, we use one enterprise system for financial transactions, HR benefit transactions, um, in the Oracle Enterprise System. So the fact that we're all using the same system certainly achieves a, um, financial efficiency for sure. So that's something we work really closely with them on. We're three legal entities, uh, because Music City Center is also part of this, that are all operating within the Oracle upgrade that's going on, and that absolutely would be a financial efficiency. So I'm wondering if that was it.
Okay.
But we work really closely with them on that. I mean, we are needy partners. We're just different legal entities, so it gets customized to meet our needs.
I will, I will go back and find what specifically I'm referencing, and then I'll follow up with you on it. Uh, colleagues, do we have any other questions before we jump into, uh, the wishlist with regards to the pay plan and COLA? Council Lady Allen?
I just want to beat a dead horse, because I'm still not sure I'm totally clear. We've talked about studying the raises for the school board, and that it would need additional money to do that, but it sounds like that the study is still ongoing now. Is it, is it possible that it, that can be included as they finish up this study, or are we for sure talking about it next year?
I'm pretty sure that we have run out of any money. We've thrown so much into the current compensation study that we're doing, but Mercer is still on contract with us, so we can engage them for a separate engagement to do that, if we want to do that route. We also, like I said, we've also proposed another alternative that might be slightly cheaper, that may help us get to a validation point that would allow us to have a good data point for an increased pay increase for school board members.
Gotcha. And would that require money that we need to get into this budget to make happen?
Um, possibly so.
Okay.
I, I can say HR doesn't have it. I think, it sounds like there is a dialogue going on. Like, I think Schools is looking to help us, or you guys are looking to help us, but we would need possibly a little bit of money to either get us on the smaller one, or I can also, one of my takeaways was getting a, a cost estimate on if Mercer just outsourced and did it.
Okay, and you'll let us know what those are. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, do we have any other questions? Uh, Councilmember Cash?
I want to follow up on that a little bit. So we're not gonna make, we, we know that they have, that, that there has to be an election take place before the salaries go up. We're not gonna make August twenty twenty-four, but we're, but we realize that we, that if we don't make August twenty twenty-six, that, that makes it another two years before we can do something about it, right?
Yeah.
Was that on school board? That was on school board, okay.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay. Any other questions for HR with regards to compensation, y'all? All right, colleagues, if you can go to your wishlist, um, page five. Um, and just so you'll know, the, the way that we'll kind of go through this process is we will go through, um, wishlist items every day. In the initial, first few sessions, we'll kind of go over what everyone is asking for. And then towards the, uh, end, we'll go through various funding sources to figure out how we can fund all the good stuff that we want to do. Um, but starting off on page five, under general government, that is where we will see the request for, uh, compensation. And we received, um, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. Twelve requests. I believe about twelve requests, all of them getting the COLA up to four percent. Um, so I did want to kind of open up the conversation to get you all's thoughts on that, and I, I wanted to prime this with the information that we got earlier. Um, when it was announced that we're bringing metro employees to twenty dollars an hour, um, not everyone realized that that did not mean MMPS employees. So I think right now, a really tough conversation that we're going to have, and again, ideally, it would be amazing if we could do both, but if we're not able to find funding, well, it's not that we can't find funding for both. If we choose to do both, we are going to have to figure out where the other funding will come from. So I just want to put that out there. Um, but I think that it will be incumbent upon us to have that conversation of, of what that looks like, because the twenty million, the, excuse me, the twenty dollars an hour in the mayor's proposed budget does not include MMPS employees. Um, so I think that there needs to be a, a real conversation about if there is a choice that has to be made, are we looking at four percent, trying to get to the four percent COLA? Or are we looking at trying to get to the twenty dollars an hour, uh, for the MMPS employees? And I also just want to acknowledge that, um, your wishlist, although you've submitted one version of the wishlist, you will have the opportunity to update your wishlist um, after the public hearing, which is on June the fourth. So the final version of your wishlist will be due on June the sixth. So the final version of your wish list will be due on June the sixth at twelve noon. It says four o'clock, but we're gonna have to bump it up to noon on June the si- it is four hours. On June the sixth.
Take note for past today.
Not twelve thirty, because we have a, we have to, council staff has to prepare those updated wish lists for another meeting that's happening today. So I want to, so while I recognize that that's not on people's wish list, I also want to acknowledge that many people were not aware of this. So now that we are aware of this, this is a conversation that we need to kind of go into. So I saw council member Druffel first and then I saw council member Coop, actually, I'm so sorry, I saw Coopin first. Then I saw Druffel, then I saw Styles.
It's not actually about this. I actually wanted to make reference that the Women's Caucus somehow doesn't, isn't on here.
Yes, so Director Darby did just, I did just bring it to her attention. So she, Director Darby is requesting a updated copy of the wish list so that it does reflect the Women's Caucus.
And none of mine are on there, which.
Yours are not on there?
Yeah, I stayed late, I have some.
Oh, I know you've got.
And I have, I think one that was transposed with Evan Segal.
Ah, okay, so, so everybody, if you could put your hands down. If you could put your hands down for one moment, if your wish list items are not on here or if there's an error, can you raise your hand? So we got Women's Caucus and then we need Allen's wish list. And then Evans and Evan Segal have something transposed. And then council member, what's, what's happening with yours?
Funding that should be for the Music and Arts Commission is actually listed just as hiring arts.
Okay.
And also my COLA was for five percent, it doesn't mention what my percentage is.
Okay. You got twenty-one million, all right. All right, Council lady, all right. All right, thank you so much. So for the people that want to speak on this, we had Coopin, we had Druffel, we had Gad, we had, I think, Allen, your, was your hand up?
No, just a.
Okay. Evan Segal, Evans. Swara, were you on there? And then Council Lady Swara, any, anyone else wants to be in on the action? All right, I got you on here, Evans. Okay, council member Coopin, kick us off.
Thank you, Chair. Statement of question.
Thank you all so much. Thank you. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Statement of question, appreciate your acknowledgement that some of us didn't, didn't know. New, newbie mistake, but I just wanted to share that I also would add my support to the, to what's shared here, a four percent COLA for metro and MNPS, so consider that thirteen on the list instead of twelve. I did not put that on my wish list, but would have had I realized.
Wait, which one, the, the twenty dollars an hour or the COLA?
I think the COLA.
Okay.
The COLA, four percent COLA for metro and MNPS. And my, my question is, so the seven million, is that the half percent COLA increase for both MNPS and general? Seven, seven million covers the.
Seven million covers half a percent to get both MNPS and general government. So, and let me just take a step back. So what we saw last year was general government got to a six percent COLA, MNPS got to a four percent COLA. This year, we want to make sure that we are staying lock-in step. So whatever COLA we're giving to general government, it is my strong preference that we give that same COLA to MNPS. So the cost to get both MNPS to, to four percent and general government to four percent is one seven million dollars to cover both entities.
Okay, well, I would like to add my support to that.
No?
Sorry, I just want to additionally clarify that the eight point six million that HR came up with is across all funds. When we look at the, the compensation, we look at general funds. So seven million dollars is what general fund, GSD, USD comes out to, we break that between both funds. So when we look at, you know, four percent, yes, we will take the whole total, but special revenue funds usually fund themselves for the compensation package. So we put that into the special revenue funds. And then we only look at what the general, GSD, USD, MNPS, general fund dollar amount need is, because that's where we need to make the money from.
So we need to find seven million dollars if we want to get to four percent COLA to both MNPS and general government.
And we will adjust the special revenue fund departments for that amount. So everybody will be at four percent.
Thank you. Is that clear for y'all? You want to, you have a question on this?
Special revenues, great.
It was under a mattress.
Because my response from Mary Jo says for each one one thing is eight point five. So we would be at four point five, because isn't it already at three point five? If we found eight point five million, we would be at four point five. Because we're already at three point five. So seven million, only one point five for half.
That's for, that's for general.
Yeah, multiple, multiple.
Well, it says for everything, but maybe that's why I'm asking.
So if we're, if we were not finding MNPS, then it's eight point six million dollars just for general government. So that eight point six may have been referenced from what, eight point five, eight point six is referenced from what HR was just telling us, because they look at it as only general government. When we look at it, we look at general government, MNPS and special revenue fund departments. So we look at everything. So that eight point six is inclusive of special revenue fund departments and general fund. And what I was just saying is that we already know that if you all approve four percent, special revenue fund department is going to get theirs because we're giving it to general government. And where we need to really find the money from is for the general fund departments, because our revenues are kind of limited.
Okay, council member Coopin, did that answer your question?
That was perfect, thank you.
Okay. How to sneak out the door. Council member Druffel, you're recognized.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Just to verify, as I look, a lot of common requests, they're, they're going to be consolidated at some point. Since there are some common requests through this, you can see a lot of very similar.
Yes, so, so thank you for, for pointing it out. So colleagues, the way that this is, the way that the wish list is set up, if you go to page five, you'll see multiple people are saying that they want to fund that additional COLA. However, people will have different funding sources. So if, if Council Lady Swara wants to fund a half percent COLA and she wants to pull from funding source A, and Council Member Harrell wants to do the same thing, but he wants to pull from, uh, uh, funding source B, and Council Lady Sepulveda wants to pull from funding source C, they all have the same desire to fund this thing, but they have a different way of trying to get there. So the way that we're kind of working through the wish list process will be, let's kind of prioritize what we like to see funded. And then once we figure out what that number is, now let's work through our funding sources to see what gives us the least amount of heartburn to get to the number that we need to get to the request that we have.
Yeah, thank, thanks, Chair. And you see, if you go through, I just browsed through it, there's a lot of common, like, Art Commission, there's, there's five requests for a hundred twenty-five thousand. So you see a lot of common requests that are similar, probably different, to your point, different funding sources. But it now would help a lot to, to do that.
Right, so that you know how many people support.
Yeah, so. Yeah. So were you making a, I'm sorry, were you making a?
No, I'm making a request that we maybe work to consolidate those common requests. And especially when this is the same amount, you, you get the seven million on general government for the, you know, the, the COLA, et cetera. And then you get a lot of these. Anyhow, I went through the whole thing and it looks like there's a lot of similar requests with similar goals. It would probably help us expedite things.
Yeah, I would definitely check with the council office to see if there's any additional consolidation. I believe the, the redundancy is because the funding sources are different. So I believe that's why you see them listed more than one time. And then also, you may see some things like, the minority caucus may have something and then various minority caucus members may have that same thing. And I think that just kind of, the, the, the way that we've kind of done this process, at least the last couple of years, it just kind of shows support, you know? So if ten people are asking for this, then that's something that people may want to see in the budget, you know?
Yeah, your point of prioritizing then finding funding sources, I think is a great idea. Thanks.
Thank you, appreciate it.
They just put down their request and then they just listed all the funding, it's all in one line, funding for blah, 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 blah. Yeah, we, they just did it all in one line, all the different places people wanted to steal money from.
Next, we have council member Gad, you're recognized.
Oh, so back on the MNPS employees, where we were talking about, in the discussion, talking about increasing them to the twenty dollars. So if we're updating our list to include that, for that part, should we be waiting on something from MNPS? Are we going to do a formal request for them to give us information on pay scale so we don't inequitably mess up their chain? Or how are we gonna, do we know how we're gonna approach that?
So I've already requested that MNPS give us that breakdown. So the, the breakdown that I gave y'all was quick and dirty math that I did this weekend. And to me, it looks like this could impact about three thousand employees and those employees could get about an extra three thousand dollars. That's not, that's just delishia math, that's not MNPS math, right? So I want to make sure that we fact-check that and get the correct numbers so that we can make a decision. But I did want us to kind of gauge that conversation today, to just kind of gauge interest, to see where, where people are on it, knowing that there's more data points that we are going to get. But from the, from the information that, it, it looks like to me, the conversation that we're having is, do we get about three thousand employees an extra three thousand a year? Or do we get all employees an extra two hundred to five hundred a year? And if we want to do both, where are we gonna pull the money from?
And do you, are they, is MNPS gonna get back to you timely enough for this budget year?
Yes, yes.
Do you know when that, or do, have they told you when they're gonna send that information yet?
I don't know when we'll get that information, but it was requested this morning. Erin, do you happen to know how long it'd take MNPS to kind of get some information for us? No worries. Okay, no worries. Hopefully, we'll, we'll have it in the next day or two, but I'll add to the list, Spain. Was that it, Council Lady Gad? Okay. Uh, next, I have Council Lady Evans.
Oh, have I told you how delightful you're looking tonight? I just wanted to know on the twenty dollars an hour, if we know how much money is allocated to increase wages to twenty dollars per hour in the overall.
In the mayor's budget? Do you happen to know that, Erin? Sorry. How much money in the mayor's proposed budget is going towards getting, uh, general government employees up to twenty an hour?
That's all included in the, in the total pay plan number. I think we would need HR to break that out specifically of how much that is going to be. But they gave us a general total number inclusive of what, what's for the compensation.
Thank you. I'll add that to my HR list.
Okay, perfect. I know that it is a small number of employees that that would impact, but we can get some more information on that. Is that it, Council Lady Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Council Lady Evan Segal.
I think that gets to my question. I think I recall that it was like between fifty and seventy employees who are affected to get to twenty dollars an hour.
That was MNPD, I meant MNPS.
In government.
In general government, I think it was a very small.
General government, three hundred and thirty-seven.
Oh, it was.
Or making less than twenty dollars an hour.
So full, so, sorry.
They didn't give you a dollar amount though.
So the full ti- it's three hundred and thirty-seven employees and then MNPS potentially an additional three thousand. I think this is a really interesting point. I want to thank you for bringing it up. I think that, I don't like having to make tough calls, so I don't want to. But.
Welcome to the job. You signed up for it.
I know, I know. I just, I think that the idea of somebody who's making eighteen, making twenty, is really important to their quality of life. And the, you know, I'm grateful that we can do that for those three hundred and thirty-seven metro employees, but if you could do an additional three thousand people who keep our schools going, I think that is something we really need to think about.
And, and I'm, and again, I want to be really clear, that is just, what I did was I took nine million dollars and I figured out the, what got us to nine million and that's what got me there. So we're gonna, we're gonna clarify that because I don't, I don't want to misspeak. Maybe that number's off, but I want to make sure that we have the right number.
And they were clearly right, that's full-time, not part-time, or is that everybody at MNPS?
That is the request that I put in this morning to give that information.
Okay.
I also see Tamika.
Thank you.
Wait, man, you said what?
Uh, is that full-time or is that, um, full-time and part-time?
That's a question.
That's a question I asked at MNPS. I'll add to that.
Okay, sorry, I just got all turned around, all the numbers, so I would love those updated numbers.
I'll add to the list. Okay. Uh, next, is that it, Council Lady Evan Segal?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, next person, Council Lady Swara.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. It, it is a tough call. My preference will be that we do both and we can go shake off the couch, which I don't know where it will come from. But if we have to, if we have to pick one, which I hope we don't have to, then I think the nine million makes more sense. Now, I think maybe after we get the numbers, maybe it will be less than nine millions, because we only have to do part-time employee, uh, uh, full-time employees. So once we get the data and it's less than, hopefully gets us to where we have, we can do both. But if we end up in a pickola and we cannot do both, then my preference, and I'm just putting my opinion out there, is that I want the employees to get the COLA, but I also think that, uh, 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 doing twenty on one side and not on the other side is not equitable. And the impact on, on, on the employees, the three thousand difference of two hundred and fifty is major. So I will, I, my personal opinion is let's do both if we can, once we get the numbers. But if we cannot, I will want to prioritize the twenty dollar an hour over the point five percent COLA.
Thank you, Council Lady Swara. Councilmember Cash?
I'm gonna ask a question and I don't expect an answer right now. But, so we're, I, I appreciate you, Chair, thinking about the, the, getting the eighteen to dollars to twenty dollars. That was something I asked about and cared a lot about. I, I kind of didn't feel really great about the answer I got. And, and glad that you are carrying that torch. I guess what I'd like to know at some point in the future is if we can try to do both, the three point five to four percent COLA and getting metro employees up to twenty dollars an hour. You know, we're, if, if we do this, you know, the funding sources, we can't go to the MNPS budget and say, ooh, look, here's a line item right here, this could help, right? And so I would like to know if to get both, MNPS is willing to look at their budget a little more closely and help us get there.
That's a good question. I will make sure, I will make sure to raise that with MNPS. Thank you, Councilmember Cash. Councilmember Spain?
Thanks. I'm, I'm on the same thing, on the, on the information we're requesting from MNPS. I'm just wondering if we are asking what's it gonna take to get those employees to a minimum twenty dollars, twenty dollars an hour? Or are we also asking for the commensurate increases in the pay scales so that we're avoiding the compression issues that we were talking about earlier?
That's already, that's already included in? Okay. I will get clarity from MNPS on, if that's including fixing compression. And MM, I'm assuming it would be the school board, but I'll get clarity on this. But they would have to essentially outline what that paid plan would look, look like, which is what Director Hall was saying. But I'll make sure that we expect, that we get that question answered.
Because I assume that's what we've done on the general government side, is we didn't just raise everybody to that twenty dollars an hour, we increased the scale all the way up.
Yep. Director Hall did say that, that they did do that on our side, so we'll, we'll ask MNPS about it for their side.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Spain. Uh, Councilmember Webb?
That, that's what I wanted you to add to your weak link.
Okay. All right. And Council Lady Sepulveda?
Thank you, Chair. Since Tamika with SEIU is back there, I, I was wondering if we could call on her to ask for those positions at MNPS that we're trying to raise up to twenty dollars an hour, what positions those are and how many people, if they have an idea of how, how many people that would affect.
So we typically don't call on anybody that is outside of, uh, our request and then we break the protocol. I will allow it for this one question, but. I will allow it for this one question. Um, but, uh, can, uh, Ms. White, do you have that information?
What was the question? I couldn't, it's hard to hear back here.
Um, do you know which, uh, employees are making less than 18 an hour? And for the record, I've asked, this is one of the questions I was asked, uh, that I did ask MM, that I asked, that I requested be asked to MMPS this morning. So we will have an official answer from MMPS, but would you like to weigh in on that?
So right now, those that are making less than $20 an hour are some parapro, uh, employees as well as substitute teachers. Um, there are not a lot of people that are making less than $20 an hour. Um, so there's some parapros, um, of course, the janitorial staff is outsourced, so they make less than $15 an hour. Uh, but parapros and substitute teachers.
Okay.
And, and the janitors, but they are not under the government umbrella. They are privately.
Right. So the custodians are not included in that 9 million?
Correct.
Yeah, I guess to that point, maybe we bring the janitorial staff back in-house. I guess it's the, the, the lesson there. Um, I guess, and based off of the information, that information, and I guess we'll have the official MNPD, MMPS, uh, statement, I would rather prioritize, um, getting to 4% cola and have MMPS rework their budget to get the rest of their, um, employees to $20 an hour. That's, that's where I would stand.
Thank you.
Well, then, that would be something that we would, we would need to ask MMPS. Why is it that they can't get those few employees up to $20 an hour?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's really gonna depend on the number of employees, because I, I do think it's gonna be more than a few. Uh, because it's $9 million, so that's likely gonna be a more than a few. So we'll have to get that number from MMPS. I think one thing for us also to consider, and I 100% support asking MMPS to, um, find more money in their budget. That would be very helpful for us if they could do that. Um, but keep in mind that we're looking at the ESAR bridge this year. So for anyone who was not here for that budget hearing, the, the federal COVID dollars that we have received, um, are, are, are no more. So, um, MMPS did a lot of great programming and they did, uh, they provided a lot of supports to our students with that money. And that money is now gone. So they are having to bridge, um, many of those programs from this, you know, one-time funding source and putting it into their operational budget. So MMPS is having to dig into, uh, some of their, uh, surplus funding to make sure that we are able to fund, um, uh, some of the work that was being done through the ESAR money. So, um, MMPS is already, um, having to work very hard to meet the needs of what they have. Because they are trying to make up for that ESAR bridge. So I just want to make sure that everybody is aware of that. Again, I do support asking them to, uh, look really, really hard and, and, you know, digging the couch cushions to try to find extra coins. Um, but they, they are doing that also with the ESAR money. So just making sure that that's out on the table. Councilmember Cash, just wanted to be recognized.
I was just gonna, yes, thank you. I was just gonna add, remember that there, from the discussion, there are two types of substitutes. There are the classroom associates. I think they're expected to work five days a week or full-time. And then there are the other substitutes that I know that, that may not work every day and may not be in the same building every day. It creates some flexibility. I know that that latter group is under 20, and I'm not sure. But I think that classroom associates might be up there at, at 20 or above, but I could be wrong. I, I know they're better paid than the, like, day-to-day substitutes. And, um, and I appreciate what you said about ESAR funds. I know that there are, as, as we heard at that hearing, there were plenty of districts across the country that are in not, that did not approach it as carefully or as skillfully as our district did. And they certainly deserve to do those for how they bridge that gap.
Thank, thank you. Thank you for that. And that was brought up in the, thank you for acknowledging that, Councilmember Cash. That was brought up in the MMPS budget hearing, that, uh, other department, other school boards across, the school systems across the country are having to, you know, make cuts and layoffs based on that funding drying up. But, um, Nashville, we're trying to be really creative to make sure that we bridge that funding so that our students can still get the much-needed resources. Uh, do we have any other thoughts on, Council Lady Welsh?
Um, I, I really think that the cola should be 5% because I think everybody should be, um, keeping up with inflation. And, um, I would posit that the amount allocated for merit raises this year is 20.8 million. That we freeze merit raises, particularly since they are individually employee-based and can go anywhere from 0 to 15% and move that money into colas for everyone within metro to 5%. And that would effectively make people who are getting, who are eligible for merit increases to only get 1% less than what they would get if they got a merit and a cola. And I think that's more equitable and everyone gets a cola to 5% for the year. Moving that money already allocated from the mayor's budget, 20.8 million, over to colas.
Okay, say, so say that again. You said that is 20 million?
It's 20.8 million allocated for merit raises.
Uh-huh.
Per Shannon. I think that we should freeze merit raises this year, particularly given that Shannon said merit raises are decision-based by employee and can go anywhere from 0 to 15%. We can freeze those. We're in a flat budget year. That 20.8 million should be moved into colas to bring everyone in metro up to 5%. What that would do is bring our lowest-paid employees who have been, haven't been keeping up with inflation up to inflation. And people who would have gotten merit increases plus cola would effectively, effectively only be getting 1% less than a 3% cola and a 3% merit or 3.5, about 1% less than they would get if it was merit and cola. Um, but everyone would be brought up on the cola to 5%. And I think that would help our lowest-paid employees, particularly in MMPS. That would really have a positive impact on their life. And that's exactly, I told you, 1.5% in the cola. I have the money here. So that's what I would posit to be, um, and I don't see any reason why we shouldn't be able to do that on merit increases. Merit increases do not go to everyone equitably and equally within metro. And so if we freeze those for this year and use that money so everybody equitably and equally gets the same raise this year in a tight budget year, I think that's fair, but that really changes the bottom line and impacts the lowest-paid employees among us.
He gave the math, math is 21 million and so 1.57 out of 0.5, so that's 21 million right there.
So that's 21 million. My, so my only question with that, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Finance to weigh in on that. So that would then put, I'm assuming you're gonna keep steps with that proposal? Or you're saying get rid of steps too?
Move everything, freeze all the stuff that's based on merit and just move all that money already allocated into colas. People who would be, who would be getting those, the step and whatever, would effectively be getting only 1% less than they would if they did it on the other system. But we'd be bringing up the lowest-paid employees. We'd finally get a cola increase that would actually keep up with inflation.
So, okay, so if you don't do the step, then, because, because right now with the step and the cola, those individuals will be getting about a 6.5% increase.
So they'd be getting 1.5% less.
Okay, hold on one second. So with the people that are getting step and cola, they're getting about a 1.5, they're getting about a 6.5% increase. For the people that are getting merit and cola, they're getting, uh, actually, I think the first one was six, about 6.6, and I think this one is about 6.5. But they're both getting about 6.5, 6.6. So you're saying take away the steps and the cola, but that brings everybody down to 5? So then they're getting less than what they would be getting?
Right, because we need to freeze it because we're in a tight budget year that we know where everything is flat. So we're, we could do that for 1%, make it up next year when we have more revenue. But for this, we could bring everybody up evenly and move everybody in metro up on an equal plane, 5% across the board for everyone. But you don't get your step or merit, and you're only making 1.5% less than you would have had you gotten the merit and the cola or the step and the cola.
I guess what I don't understand is literally everybody will be getting less money. So I don't understand how that's a benefit because everybody's going down.
Well, I mean, we know that like in MMPS, sometimes they haven't gotten their steps in certain years. So they're, they've just been getting their colas.
Uh, hold on one second. I got you, I got you. But for this year, we do have steps and colas.
Does this make sense what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I'm trucked.
Yeah, this is, so this is saying, these people are getting 6.5 or 6.8, these people are getting 6.6. We're saying everybody's getting 5. So literally, everybody's losing money.
I, not the way she's saying it. She, she's, she's, she's considering that there are some people who do not get the step or the merit. There are some people who would only get the cola.
Right.
But you're assuming that everybody.
600, it's only 600 people that only get cola, that don't get the step or the merit. So, so 9,000 people are gonna lose money, so 600 people can get an extra $500. I don't know that that's equitable. Maybe, we could consider it, we could talk about it. I just don't see how this beneficial.
Well, we can talk about details as we get more into this, but I think that, um, for our lowest-paid employees who get colas, and as Erin just pointed out, we gave MMPS less cola last year and things like that. So, um, I just think it's something that we need to look at in the way, um, since not every member, every metro employee is eligible for the same types of pay increases and other people have taken the brunt of not getting pay increases that have kept up with other people and have seen that in their quality of life and like, you know, cost of living and stuff like that.
Okay. Let's, let's come back to that, Council Lady Welsh, because I, I want us to hatch that out somewhere.
Can we just get a breakdown of how many people are just getting cola?
Yeah.
Because what you're saying.
Erin needs a chart.
Based on our explanation, if you think a lot of people are getting cola only, then that argument makes sense. But based on your explanation, if most everybody's getting 6.5, then it doesn't make sense anymore. So if we can have that break down.
She, well, she told us, when we asked her, when, when she was in here, she said that it's about 600 people that are only getting cola, and that comprises of people that are at the top of their step or people that are on a two-year step, but they are not on the year of the step in which they get the increase. So they said that was about 600 people.
So majority are getting 6.5%.
Uh-huh. It, it's either, and I'll pull it, I'll pull the exact numbers up for y'all. It was, um, it is 6.7. So for the examples that they gave us, it was about 6.7, 6.73 for people that are doing, uh, steps and then about 6.6 for people that are doing open range. So that will be taking your 6.73 down to 5, and it will be taking your 6.6 down to 5.
But again, like in MMPS, they're only getting colas, so.
How is MMPS only getting colas? They're not getting steps?
They, many years they haven't gotten their steps.
That's what I thought. Steps are in the budget this year.
This year, yeah, right, okay.
When, I mean.
It is, it is.
It's usually steps. Steps are usually included and then colas, um, something that's decided upon that we fund after approval from council.
What, did MMPS get steps last year?
Yeah.
Okay.
They, they get the same as us.
So, so MMPS has been getting their steps?
They did last year.
Okay. You said what?
I don't know about FY '21 because that was our COVID budget, but other than that, I think they got it for the last four years, just something. That, that needs to be done.
Okay, so with, uh, with, with Finance just said they would fact check for us, but they believe over the last four years, MMPS has gotten their steps with the exception of, uh, '21, which was the COVID year.
Did the people get their steps in COVID year?
Did she said that other people get steps during COVID year?
I'd have to go back and look. It was proposed for them, I believe, not to, but that might have been amended, so I don't want to.
Okay. We'll get that, Council Lady.
Yes, please don't.
Okay, we got Gad, then Cash, then Webb, then Kimbrough. All right, Council Lady Gad, you're recognized.
I'm gonna defer to, to Tom or Jason, but we were just back here talking through this, uh, just making sure you don't remove the steps when you're in that part of that conversation, um, out of that concern. It sounds like some other questions up there, um, were asked and responded to about how steps are a part of MMPS. And so I'm just kind of concerned about that, um, of not ignoring that aspect. I think where you're coming from is, makes a lot of sense. I just don't know, I'd love to see the numbers before we kind of move forward with it. And then I think Tom's going to.
Same, same kind of thing. Uh, and let's remember, and you kind of alluded to this. Remember that the people who are not getting steps are at the top of the pay, are generally at the top of the pay scale. And the people that are expecting and needing those steps are at the bottom of the pay scale. So I, I get, I, I kind of get, uh, you know, making it equal and, but, but we're equaling it out for people who are at the top of the pay scale, not at the bottom of the pay scale. And so that's my fear about that. Um, and, you know, I think those younger, newer employees are hoping and expecting those steps. And I, I just, if we, if we entertain this, I want us to just be sure of, uh, you know, be, be cautious and, and know any, like, ask about any unintended consequences. It's, it's an interesting idea, but I think there are some things that, and if we, if we really up the cola, how does that make it, like, and then next year we return the steps, does that make it harder to, to do that? And do a decent cost of inflation cola? Uh, I think there's some, I think there's some things we need to think through.
Thank you. I just want to let y'all know that the math is bad then. MMPS just texted me and it's 2,995 employees. I said 3,000, so the math is bad then. And there's over 71 different job titles. That does include both full-time and part-time because some positions, like cafeteria workers, are part-time positions. Yes, so there would be, uh, the, the question was getting MMPS up to 20 an hour. It would impact 2,995 employees, so roughly 3,000 employees, across 71 different job titles. It is both full-time and part-time because some of those positions, like the cafeteria workers, are part-time positions. So that would be very hard to only do that for the full-time workers when, like, our cafeteria workers are, are people that need it. Um, Council Lady Webb, you're, you were next.
Like, when we're talking about the merits and the steps, I have a fireman son and I, and I just hear him in conversations sometimes say, well, if I take this next test and get this next task, get this sarcasm, I get moved up this much. I just want to make sure we're not taking that away from these young guys, like, coming into the fire department and are doing this to move forward. And all these other people ahead of them, they've already got that step as they've reached that goal. And I'm, I did try to get clarification. I just want to say that's a, you know, fine line right there. We don't want to do something like that.
Thank you, Council Lady Webb. Council Lady Kimbrough, did you want to be recognized?
I did. It was just, uh, on the heels of something you said, and I think someone down here, I did also said it too. You were talking about the merit and the step, and those people who, uh, have reached that goal or that end or whatever are the only ones that would not be affected. I think that's what you said by the, um.
Mm-hmm. So it's about 600 employees that would only get a cola. They would not get a merit and they would not get a step.
But I, but I was just, I want to bring this to your attention. I believe I'm correct when I say there's still other people other than those that have reached, there are some people who are not on step or merit. My understanding, because I'm thinking specifically about, like, court officers. I don't think they get, I think they only get the, um, cola. I don't know if there are other groups or whatever, and I could be wrong, but I don't think I am.
Do y'all know if, like, court officers don't get steps or merit?
I don't, I don't, I'm pretty sure they don't get it.
Okay. Um, well.
And it may be, I'm saying, there may be some other employees that are similarly situated that we don't know about. I just thought about that because I've been in the courts.
So we can ask that question to, and I got you on the list, uh, we can ask that question to HR. I mean, what, tonight, HR specifically said about 600, and those were the two examples that they gave us. But we can clarify if other people fall under that 600, um, but we'll get that, we'll make sure to get that information. And, and to be clear, we're not, like, making this decision today, y'all. This is just, this is just conversation so that we can have the, the information that we need as we're looking at a, um, or as I look at a substitute budget. I, this is just conversation. Um, Council Lady Welsh, Council Lady. Um, Council Lady Welsh, Council Lady Evan Segal, and then did I see your hand, Councilmember Spain? I saw Spain before Welsh, if you don't mind, um, so I saw uh Spain and then Evan Segal and then Welsh.
Uh, thank you, just, just quick, um, now I'm back on the MNPS deal, based on what you just said, if we're talking about full-time and part-time for MNPS, are then, are we then creating an issue because we're only doing full-time twenty dollars an hour on the general side?
Now, what I do remember is that that was a really small number, so we could find out how much it would be to then bring part-time up to twenty dollars an hour. And uh HR did say that in many of those positions, they're still making the rate, they're just working, they're just working less hours. So they still may be making twenty-two an hour, they're just working fewer hours, but we can get clarity from HR on that. Council Lady Evan Segal.
Uh, Councilmember Spain actually asked my question.
Okay, okay, Council Lady Welsh.
Um, yeah, I just got a little bit of information, MNPS employees didn't get steps in two thousand fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, nineteen, and twenty. Metro government.
What, you said it one time, you said twenty fourteen?
Fifteen.
Uh-huh.
Sixteen.
Uh-huh.
Seventeen.
Uh-huh.
Nineteen and twenty. Metro government didn't get steps in two thousand ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen.
Hold on, ten, eleven.
Twelve and thirteen.
Thirteen, uh-huh.
And um, as someone just pointed out to me, a lot of the merit stuff is going for people who already are making a living wage in Metro government. And raising the COLA and things, we're trying to bring people up as much as we can to, you know, get them to a living wage over time. So we don't need to be thinking necessarily about people in the upper echelon when we're trying to, like, raise the bottom echelon up to be where they are, can more live and stay in the city and work, so just something to throw out there for.
So I, what I believe you may be recommending, and I don't want to put words here, ma'am, but I believe you're saying cut the merit, not the steps, because the steps are not the highest-paid people, the steps aren't the lower-paid people, so.
I just, the, the merit budget for what's been budgeted in the mayor's budget for merit was twenty point eight million.
But steps falls on the merit, two-thirds of these, two-thirds of the merit budget goes to steps. So that's, that's where you, that's where we would then come into an issue, because if we cut that, and we could find out from HR, uh, and not that we're making this recommendation, but we could find out from HR if there's a way to just cut the one-third of the merit and not the two-thirds of the steps. We can find that out from HR, but two-thirds of the merit budget is actually people's steps. Um, when I did inquire about what it would look like to not do merit increases for um individuals that are kind of on that higher pay scale, um, one thing that was brought up was that uh trying to make sure that we're staying competitive, because government pays less than private sector, so if you have professional.
Not to us.
Oh. Went over my head, yeah, um, so if we are looking at then, and again, I'm not saying we should or shouldn't, but I did inquire, because I want to make sure we have all, all the data to make the decisions. But if we are looking at that, then that could present an issue with us trying to retain um some of the positions that are more, like, specialized positions. Uh, and from Director Hall's, what she explained was that they're only getting three percent of the budget for those merit increases, so we need to make a determination on how, because I know you said that people are getting up to fifteen percent. We need to get some information from Director Hall on what that, what that looks like, because she's saying that they're only getting three percent of their budget, so I don't, I don't know how it gets up to fifteen percent. So we'll ask, we'll get clarity from.
What's the fifteen percent?
You mentioned that merit goes up to fifteen percent.
Uh, it can go from zero to fifteen percent is what she said, it's, it's based on, it's employee-based and a, a department head can make that determination based on whatever their, their protocol is, and it can, they can offer raises of zero or up to fifteen percent, so.
Yeah.
See, it would be good to find out what the exact amount then is, just for the merit portion as opposed to the steps, and see how many millions that gives us to play with.
A third of twenty million. It will be a third of the, well, a third of the employees are on merit, and it's three percent, so I believe that will be about seven million, but we would have to.
We need to make sure that we're making the same change across all.
Can you project, so that I can hear you?
I was, I was gonna say, you know, the charter twelve point ten requires that we make the same change across the board across, across all pay classes, so I don't, and this would be a question for HR and maybe Finance. I don't know if cutting one-third out of the merit would comply with that requirement under the charter, but that's just something that we, we need to look into.
Uh, Council Lady Evan Segal.
Uh, just real quick thing about Councilmember Webb's comment and um Finance and, and Councilwoman correct me if I'm wrong. I think what they're talking about is going up steps, not like increases within their steps. So if you get certain certifications, sometimes you can move to a new step classification, but that is not the raises.
But they get a pay raise as they do it.
Well, yeah, because you would move up the chart instead of across the chart.
Council Lady GAD.
Can we, I think a question I'll have for HR, I, I don't know, Finance may be my department too, but um looking um for the, for the years that, that home government employees um didn't get steps back in twenty-ten to twenty-thirteen, if those are the years. Um, I'd like to know if those ever got, you know, addressed through ladder budgets or payroll or anything like that to see if we could get some kind of report, if that's ever been kind of rectified or normalized um for those employees. Um, and then the other part would be MNPS's years where steps were not um a part of their budget pay through the twenty-fourteen to twenty-twenty, so I think that may be another question for MNPS, of what that would look like. Um, but those are couple of questions, I don't know if those go to you, um, or HR, or probably to the black type of that person.
Now, I know that we addressed it in our budget work session last year.
Were, were you here for that, Council Lady Sora, do you remember?
Was any, any second term, or do y'all remember that conversation last year? About the years that those steps were missing, and that was a part of the conversation of trying to get that additional um COLA last year? And I, and I want to be, I want to be extremely clear about this, because there, I think it's very important. If you owed me a hundred dollars ten years ago and you give me a hundred dollars today, you have still done a disservice, because who knows what I could have did with that hundred dollars, who knows how much money I had to borrow and, and to make up for that, right? So like, I think that, that um while it is incumbent upon us to make sure that we are, like, making it right with people, I do want to acknowledge that there is no making it right when we get it, when we are not able to do what we need to do. Um, saying that, um, I will uh look to Finance to gather an official response to that question, but that was part of the conversation last year when we were looking um at that COLA, and I know that uh there were also conversations, because this has been brought up, I just want to make sure that we also kind of get this on the record too. Um, you know, when we looked at the year that we got, you know, the teachers, the highest-paid teachers, we did not say, these are the highest-paid coach inspectors, these are the highest-paid firefighters. Like, we had a year that we really focused on teachers, we had a year that we focused on paraprofessionals. Last year was the year that the government kind of got that extra bump, that extra two percent, um, which is why we're trying to do both of those uh this year, that's why we're trying to, to stay lock-in step, because I do know that that caused some hurt feelings, like, on everybody's side. Like, when teachers got more money and other people didn't, people were upset. When general government got more money and teachers didn't, people were upset, so we're trying to avoid that this year. Um, but to answer your question directly about the years that steps were missed, that was addressed last year, and we actually, uh, HR did a presentation in which they compared um, like, the COLA and the inflation every year to show us where we landed, um, to kind of show where we were on that. So I don't want to speak for HR, but I will ask them to share that information uh from last year and to update it with this year's information.
And thank you, and I see some head nodding back there and waving, so I.
Okay.
Yeah, I was gonna say the same thing, HR would be the best um in position to answer this, these kind of questions, um, especially because we were in this financial position in those years, than we are now. But, and they made decisions of what they could do at that point in time. Uh, we can only calculate how much was given from a budget perspective, but they would be able to explain, you know, who, who got what in MNPS in the same manner as well.
Thank you, Chair.
Will we have the department heads stay until the end of the meetings?
Department heads won't be here for these, those were, they were just here for this one, to give us the information on the pay plan. Um, I don't think we're gonna have any department heads for any of the, um, any of the other ones. But I will make sure that, that we get these questions um to HR. And any questions that are asked, y'all, you can get the answers on that SharePoint page. Um, on national.gov, there's a link on the top right-hand corner that says fiscal year twenty-five budget resources. And uh if you click that link, you will be able to get uh all of our uh resources for this year, but there is a, a FAQ in which you will have your questions answered. Um, so with that, y'all, it's six thirty-three, we're going to go ahead and wrap up today's session. We will be back tomorrow um to continue working through our wish list, thank you for your time, and I will see y'all tomorrow. Meeting adjourned.